Good evening. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Need to gavel.
Thanks for coming to the town hall meeting. Today is Tuesday, May the thirteenth, twenty twenty five. All right. Thank you. So this is our town hall meeting. I just, uh, we've got a lot of new faces. So we'll kind of talk through how we work. Uh, we're going to talk a little bit about what we want to for a few minutes, uh, update you on a few things. And then you're welcome to ask questions about that or talk about anything that's on your mind when that comes, when we turn it over to you. We asked if you come, if you have a comment that you come up to the front, you state your name and address and then fire away. With that, we're going to start with a few announcements. First, on May twenty sixth, uh, the O'Conne County Veterans Memorial Foundation is going to host a Memorial Day service. And that will be at eleven o'clock at O'Conne Veterans Park. So May twenty sixth at eleven AM at O'Conne Veterans Park. Uh, on the next thing is the Jimmy Daniel Waste and Recycling Site. Um, this permanent closure will occur on July thirtieth of this year. And that's having to close because of the three sixteen interchange with Jimmy Daniel Road. So July thirtieth, twenty twenty five will be the last day of operations there. Also, our, our second budget hearing will be on May the twentieth. It'll be at six PM here in this room. We expect to have the adoption on June third, twenty twenty five. If you need, we'd like to see a copy of the budget in the budget presentation. You can get that on our website. We also have cards at the back that have a QR code that'll take you right to it. If you want to take a look at it and big, we, we'd love to hear from you and hear your comments on it. Let's see. Next item is we're going to put a plug in for our C Click Fix. It's an app you can get to put on your phone. If you see a, a dead carcass or a pothole, you can take a picture of it, shoot it, it'll go to the correct department and get things taken care of. Uh, we had a pretty good example. See if I can read it now. And somebody submitted something on May the fifth at ten fifty four AM in reference to a pothole. And then they responded back that it was fixed and they appreciated the quick response. And that was on the, uh, May sixth at three, uh, eighteen PM. So it does get routed to the correct departments there for response. Our next item is O'Conne County one oh one. Uh, so this is a, a class that our county administrators worked with his staff to come up with. Kind of talks through the role of local government. You'll go and visit the departments and kind of see how everything works and how the local government operates. Uh, there's also a handout for that in the back that has a QR code to a website. The first class open to citizens will be, registration will start sometime in June. So just keep an eye if you have any interest in that. Please keep an eye on it. Another item update, we're going to run through our road projects that we got going on. Um, first one is Snow's Mill at Lane Creek Roundabout. We awarded that contractor on February fourth of this year. That intersection will close on, on or about May twenty third. Um, for up to ninety days, we're hoping it's going to be a lot quicker, but that roundabout will be, begin construction at the end of the month. A new high shows at Union Church Road Roundabout. We, is out to bid at right now. We expect to award that to a firm on June third. The next, uh, roundabout on the schedule is Aston Dale at Collin Ferry Road. That is currently finishing up the right of way. We're waiting to hear back from a couple of utilities. Um, and then final design will be completed. We expect to be at bid by September of this year with award the first of October. Uh, Cold Springs, Snow's Mill at Acocks Road is in design and right of way. Morse Ford at Lane Creek is also in design and right of way. Uh, State Route fifty three at Cold Springs and Clock Felters. We just awarded that bid for design for a roundabout. Uh, so that design will be completed this year. We're doing a signal replacement Atlanta Highway in Burson. We're having to get some easements for construction from the right, for the railroad. So that's taking a little longer than expected. We replaced a couple at Miller's Lake in Jenningsville, and that project is now complete. So that's all the county projects. We have some, uh, Georgia Department of Transportation projects going on. First is the bundle for Jimmy Daniel Verger Link for No Coney Connector at three sixteen. Well, Archer Western has been assigned the contract and construction will begin this year. That's, uh, so sometime in August, they expect to start, um, moving things around. We have the four forty one widening from Morgan Candle Line to Bishop, uh, to a four lane road. Right of ways is supposed to be wrapping up and they expect construction to happen in twenty twenty eight. The Bishop bypass for four forty one is yet to be determined. Dow's Mill Extension Dow's Mill. Excuse me, Dow's Mill Road Interchange. Current in the concept development, we don't, we have not received the final. It's expected to be a right in, right out on each side. I'm sorry. All right. Dow's Mill and then Dow's Mill Extension. That's a full interchange with roundabouts, uh, on the exits. Um, that's currently finishing up design and the construction will be coming up shortly. McNuts Creeks will be the right, right in, right out. Currently, Mars Hills expect to be a cul-de-sac on each end at three sixteen. And then Julian Drive, uh, has not been determined what's going to happen there. And you, as you remember, Experiment Station is widening and again, eighteen months, we should be done with that. We, we're hopeful that that will be done by the end of this summer. We do have some joint projects with the Department of Transportation. Snow's Mill at Rocky Branch is a roundabout. The, uh, the state has awarded contractor. The contract to ER Snell. They are working on utility relocations now with construction beginning in this year and expecting completion in the first quarter of twenty twenty six. Malcolm Bridge Road at Ray's Church Road is in right of way acquisition. Um, we're hoping we can wrap that up in the next, uh, few months. And currently construction scheduled for twenty twenty six. We're trying to advance that up, uh, to an earlier date. The Lot Felter Road at Barbara Creek, the bridge replacement, that's coming up shortly. Um, that road will have a detour or complete closure. What was that on that June, June second? So June second, you won't be able to go from fifty three to seventy eight on Clock Felter Road. Looks like we have a lot of interest in parks. So we'll go ahead and give you some update on what, what's going on right now. We have master plans for all our park facilities and we, we have went through a, a big town hall meeting talking about those. So Heritage Park, um, is currently in design phase. Uh, we have the OVP tennis, which is a finish up of original master plan plus a change in the master plan that increases the number. That's currently in design. We are working with the, or with the tennis association in reference to a grant. And so we were, that's kind of delayed things. We had to change some on, on the plans to meet some of the standards they were coming up with. So hopefully that'll get completed. Uh, then we can get some, some bids on what the cost of that, those pro, those tennis courts are. Uh, do some bagging engineering and then we'll bring that before the board to make a decision on how to move forward. Uh, Wendell and Betty Dawson Park is currently in design. If you don't know, we have Carter Engineering has been awarded that, uh, contract. They're already in coordination meetings with Water Resources because this is currently an active land application system that has to be decommissioned. So they're coordinating the timing and the engineering on that. We've had meetings with the traffic engineer, uh, for the county. Trying to figure out the impact to the road infrastructure and what improvements are going to have to be made to handle, um, people getting in and out. The act of, the survey is now complete. Um, and that data is being analyzed. And it's, what they'll do is look at the concept plan where things are placed and compare that to the actual conditions on the ground and determine, things may have to get shifted around, um, based on the topo, the size of the lake. I think it turned out to be a little bigger than it was in originally anticipated, uh, just based on the aerial photos. We expect to be bid ready for, um, have the bid documents ready in the first quarter, by the end of the first quarter in twenty twenty six. We've also awarded the design firm for the buildings at that location for the gym as well as the, um, we're going to turn it over to you now. If, uh, any questions, comments or emotional outbursts, now's the time.
This isn't an emotional outburst, so. So Philip Bernard, one thousand Hammond Creek Trail, beautiful Watkinsville, Georgia, formerly Bogart before the address changed. Um, my wife and I moved back to this area eight years ago. My wife grew up here. I'm a, uh, full-time banker by day, full-time dad, uh, part-time coach of the under eight jets. You've probably heard of us from the rec department. Um, part-time coach for the fifth grade North O'Conie High School Titans feeder league basketball team. Part-time coach for the flag football Bills team for my son. And, uh, and when we're not at OVP, we're usually at a gym somewhere. So, uh, first of all, I appreciate the fact that the five of you sit up here and take public feedback. And that's, that's awesome from our democracy standpoint. Um, much better y'all than me being on that end of it, but I do appreciate it. Um, a question for you all. How many of you have kids or grandkids within the, within the park system? Just asking the question. Two, three. Okay. So you know, if you've been at OVP or the gym space, the struggles that we have out there. Um, I am super excited about Dawson Park. I'm sure you've heard about that and I'm sure that that has been shared with you. I think we have a unique opportunity to do something pretty awesome for our kids and their grandkid, or their kids. Um, I'm not sure how many of you, uh, understand that when we talk about the numbers within the park system, there's a lot of people within this community that aren't counted in the numbers that you get from the park rec and the, and the, uh, user groups that, that are out there. Um, I want to give you an example of my daughter Melania. Um, so Melania plays in the feeder league basketball team. She's a soccer player trying to play basketball, but we're working through that. Um, within this feeder league, there are ten teams in the girls that will feed into North O'Conie High School. There are ten teams that are in O'Conie that will feed into their high school. They're not a part of Parks and Rec. They're not a part of the school system, but it's an independent feeder league. And right now Melania, my daughter, is a taxpaying citizen, is not counted in any of the numbers that you all see because it's travel league. It's outside of this. And I'll give you an example of the things that we faced as a, as a, um, family this year. So uh, we had the pleasure of driving over to Walton County to play, uh, practice at Grattis Church because we couldn't find court space. Um, it was enjoyable to go all the way to the north end of the county, go, you know, left and keep crossing over the river. And then getting my fifth grade daughter back at nine thirty in the afternoon, or in the evening to rinse, repeat and do it again the next day. Um, this is the same challenge that each one of these teams face because there's not court space that the, uh, that the county has. The county is already using the school, schools, gyms. And as a result, we would have the pleasure of going to Commerce High School to play O'Conie's feeder league team in a game. That's a real challenge that we have, that we have to leave this great county to go to Commerce, Georgia to play against the No Coney team. Um, but you know what? The parents and grandparents, they all showed up and we had a great time. Just a plug for the north side. We did win that game. Just throw that out there. Um, this year Melania is going to play in the, uh, flag football league. She's not counted in these numbers, but that demand continues to grow. That's on an outfield of a baseball field, not on any individual field. Had to drop her off at five thirty this afternoon for tryouts for OFC. Uh, we don't sleep much in our family, uh, for the O'Conie Football Club. Uh, they practice in a small corner of the gym because the recs are a small part of the field because the, um, the, the rec programs take precedent there. She's a fifth grader. They practice till nine o'clock because there's a lack of field space. So I just wanted to encourage you all. Um, there's several people here tonight that, that I think face the same challenges. I know you all are aware of the challenge. I think with Dawson Park, we have the unique opportunity to do it all. Right now we have the money to do that, whether it's through bonding, referendum, anything that, that may be possible. I'm just thankful for the opportunity to stand up here in front of you and express that. I would just encourage and challenge you all to listen to the people that are in this community that typically aren't here complaining. This is the first time I've ever spoken in front of you in eight years. But I just encourage you to reach out to people that you know that are hearing this outside of the parking rec numbers. And at the end of the day, we have an opportunity to do something, not just to get us back to even, but to get us ahead. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for listening. And I really appreciate the T-spots paving our, our roads in our neighborhood. So thank you for that as well.
Phil, could I ask you a question? Uh, on the feeder league, how many, how many, uh, teams are in that feeder league?
So, so North O'Conie Girls, there's about ten teams. Uh, they sometimes will break up Amory and, and like, you know, they may have three fifth grade teams to give the girls enough opportunities to play. There's a couple of other coaches here. On the boy's side, they have similar numbers. It starts in second grade all the way up, up to seventh grade. And so each one of them have anywhere between one and three teams in each age group. That's, oh, that's on the North O'Conie side. That's on the O'Conie side. They both have similar, uh, feeder leagues that roll up into that. Can't use the, the high school gym space because their teams are using that at this point. In addition to that Westminster, Prince, Athens Academy, they all have similar feeder league programs. Michael Palmer, who's been around for a while, coordinates that. And so he, he organizes and coordinates that. Again, you're kind of on your own to find, uh, practice gym space. You pay for it. You pay money to use those facilities. And then the games are kind of, if you're a home team, we have the option to play here. And obviously we don't have the courts to do that. But I think it, it, rough estimates on the numbers, you have twenty girls teams, twenty boys teams just from the north and the, uh, O'Conie sides of the equation. And that you typically have about eight to ten girls on each one of those teams, or eight to ten boys and girls on each one of those teams.
Right. So given that number again, there's twenty teams.
So about twenty teams on boys and girls from each side. So that's forty teams. Each one of those on average has about eight, call it eight, uh, children on those teams. So.
And so they're exclusively, uh, residents of O'Conie County?
Yes, sir. So that, the way the, the league works is it's districted into that. So as a North O'Conie, we play for the North O'Conie team because we're in that district.
Right.
So.
So is this, uh, is an outcrop from, from, um, not having enough capacity in the park system or because of the school system? I kept me on the standard. Cause you said they're feeding into the school.
So it's a challenge of both. So if we went to the, to the rec department and said, we need court space and we'd like to use it. For example, we use the outdoor court space and, and had somebody from the hand say, you got to reserve that. Okay. Well, we go to reserve it. But the, the challenge is it's not part of the school. It's not part of the county rep program. It's parents that come together to coach that are willing to pay the money to do that. When we go to the county, there's not enough space already because they're in the school system. As a result, when we go to the school system, the, the varsity JV ninth grade teams, both boys and girls take precedent on the one court space there. And so it's not affiliated with either, but it's parents that are trying to find court space for their children to play. Those are all residents of O'Conie County.
All right. So what's the, the age, up, upper limit on the age?
Second grade to seventh grade.
Second to seven?
Yes, sir.
All right. So when they finish timeout at seventh grade, are they feeding into the school system?
Potentially. So, so there could be, they play for the middle school team, Malcolm Bridge or whoever. There, so there's that trajectory. There's also the North O'Conie trajectory. And then it's girls that may say, I don't like basketball anymore and I'm going to go to school. So it's not a guarantee that it's a feeder for that program, but it is activity for the kids in the interim to be able to, to be active, be participate of the teams and play basketball without necessarily any affiliation to school. It just happens the, the way it's organized to start that early.
Right. What other sports have these feeder leagues?
Um, I, I can't speak. I know there's people here that, that participate in lacrosse. I know there's lacrosse that's there. I know there's a flag football league that participates. They, they play over Malcolm Bridge on Friday nights. I do know that, um, within there, you also have tackle football that has some challenges. You also have individual travel baseball and travel softball teams that aren't affiliated with anything, but they have a group of twelve kids that are this age and they may practice or look for practice space and then go play tournaments on the weekends. I do know that.
Easy to tell me what's not covered.
Would this be the emotional outburst part?
Yeah.
So, so it, I think there are several leagues that, that encompass a lot of sports. I think the challenge with field space with gym space prevent access at the rec level because there's not enough access for kids today. So a kid that might want to play rec lacrosse doesn't have the opportunity. I think there's also opportunity with travel soccer. I know I saw, uh, Morgan Anders here. They play on a church field and they rent that space because they can't have access to OVP. So I think, I think it's wide and broad and then touches a lot of citizens that I don't think are encompassed in the numbers of, of the rec department or what, what the rec department calls user groups within there. And I think there's three of those, if I'm not mistaken. So there's a lot of diversity amongst that or there are Coney residents that aren't counted in there.
Okay.
Did that answer the question?
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other question? I'm off the hot seat.
For now. We reserve the right to call you back up.
So my name is Wesley Scott. Live at thirteen eighty-one Arizona Ben, Watkinsville. Uh, I am president of O'Conie County Little League. Have been, this is my seventh year. Uh, to let you know, when I started, we had seven hundred players. We now have a thousand and fifty this year. Um, what that equates to is approximately two thousand parents. And the biggest complaint that I get is scheduling. And the reason that I get them is that we have lack of field space. Now, we got plenty of baseball and softball fields in this county, but we don't get them all. They get used for, which I, I get, I understand, but lacrosse and soccer, and they need places to play too. And a lot of times they end up playing in our outfield. So we end up with, just for example, this year, our younger ones, four to six years old, T-ball coach pitch, we had thirty. So we end up with, just for example, this year, our younger ones, four to six years old, T-ball coach pitch, we had 30 teams. We have to double them up to have practices on a field. One has to be in the outfield, one has to be in the infield. It's not ideal. We make it work. So I'm here to talk to you about Dawson Park. It doesn't have baseball and softball fields. But it has fields that lacrosse and soccer can go to and we can get our fields back. And I would say if you can make it happen, make the whole thing happen, we need it now. And we would be very happy and it would make a lot of those parents happy. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Taylor Dodd. I am the owner of Tall Socks Tennis. I live right across the line on Jimmy Daniel at four twelve Park West Avenue. I own and run Tall Socks Tennis and I have the contract with O'Conie County. And we offer junior programming, adult programming, individual lessons, events. And we serve all ages and abilities. We start at five years old and we have 80 year old people on our tennis court. And we are growing. So I first got the contract in August of or July of twenty-three. And we have now since increased our junior numbers by 20%. So we're now at roughly a thousand members and we see roughly roughly 300 junior participants per week and 120 ladies participants per week. And we have over 50 families that have parents that play and kids that play or multiple kids that play as well. Our biggest challenge is court space. We run into afternoon programming. All of our juniors play. We rarely we rarely have any adult programming because we have so many juniors in the afternoons. Now we have waitlist where we're having to turn kids away or we're having to find different solutions to serve the tennis community. Our biggest thing is to grow the game of tennis because it's a lifetime sport and it's it increases your life by 10 years. So we're just challenging our 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 community to grow, to invest in the courts and to get the courts done so that we can have more courts to play on, not just for tennis programming, but for league play as well as fun play. We have, we're unique because most most neighborhoods where I'm from, north of Atlanta, have two tennis courts per neighborhood. Here, that's that's less, that's rare. So we need a facility for our people to go play at. We I give my kids challenges at home. Like, okay, you got to serve 20 balls in. And they're like, okay, great. We tried to go to the courts on Saturday morning, Friday night, Tuesday night, and we couldn't get a court. And so that's our our struggle is we're trying to get more people to play tennis. But we're running out of court space because we have so many people playing tennis, which is great. We just need more courts. All right. I think I got everything. Thank you.
I will follow up after Taylor because I wanted to talk about tennis too. My name is Terry Gattaker. I live at eleven oh one Golf Course Lane, Athens, Georgia. It is O'Conie County though. It's out by the old Green Hills Country Club. And I was a teacher at O'Conie County High School for 21 years and then and also an assistant tennis coach for the high school for O'Conie County High School for, I don't know, seven or eight years, something like that. And I'm a local league player. And I'm also on the Clark O'Conie Tennis Association Board. And I I wanted to follow up after Taylor because I agree that we need more tennis courts. Just because when I first started playing tennis in 2003, when I took my very first lesson, OVP, of course, was not there. We had the four courts over at Herman C., but we also had access to the 10 courts at O'Conie County High School. And then once North O'Conie was built, we had access to those 10 and we no longer have access. That's 20 courts that we lost. Thankfully, you know, OVP was built. We were very excited about that. And we have the eight courts over there that get used a lot. And we would like to see the new, you know, I don't know what it's called, the proposal, I guess. We would like to see it built out in full and I know that Taylor's program works out of the four courts over at Herman C. And I believe that the I believe that the thought is to change those courts into pickleball courts. Once the courts over at OVP are increased up to adding the 16 more courts. And I just wanted to ask y'all if y'all have thought about that. If we do not get the full 16, are we still planning to change those those to pickleball courts over at Herman C.? I wanted to know that question. Do y'all know?
We haven't gotten that far. We got to figure out the cost on and look at the value engineering and then we'll come back and bring this information up. The goal is not to make anybody back up, right? The tennis will not lose.
We don't think.
We're committed to that, right?
And even if we just do eight more courts, but then Tall Socks comes over and again, as Taylor said, you know, even with her four courts, she's pretty limited on her, she's having to limit her programming. So, you know, she is using four to six courts. We come up, we get eight new courts and she's using six of them. Are we really getting, you know, how much value are we getting for, you know, whatever the the proposal is, you know, that's really my question. And then also I wanted to know, I guess, you know, you said you haven't you don't really have a date or anything. I at at first I had thought that we would be breaking ground in 2025. Is that going to happen now or is that?
That is our goal.
That's the goal to still break to start building those.
We were almost ready to bid when this tennis association grant came in at two fifty and then all of a sudden there was 500 available. So there was different kind of fencing, different kind of asphalt. We're analyzing all that. I mean, if it's going to cost us $600,000 to meet that 500,000 grant, we got to analyze.
Yes, I understand that. I understand that. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Didn't originally plan to stand up here, but thank you for listening to me. My name is Todd Mueller and I live at twelve twenty Peacock Drive in Bishop, Georgia. And I have three children that have been in the O'Conie County Recs Department. We've enjoyed our time there learning the entry level on the sport of soccer and baseball and basketball. And my son is now a baseball player over at Westminster and currently swims on a swim team and does that. And my daughter plays soccer with Morgan Anders Program over at at the Methodist Church. And I can say that just as a parent that didn't plan on getting up and talking, so I won't make it take long, that I can see the need for expansion of field space for both baseball. And I understand what was said earlier here. We were, there were times when we were practicing with young children late into the night because there simply isn't enough time to schedule the fields for different teams and inappropriate times, in my opinion, as a somewhat traditional parents for keeping your child up to play a sport. And then more recently, there's just an obvious need. If you've been out to watch the Anders Soccer Program practicing at the at the Methodist Church, there's an obvious need for more field space for soccer. There's a lot of our residents that are playing there. And we could really use that space for that. So thank you.
Good, good afternoon, evening, as it is. I'm Jeff Morgan. I live at two three four zero Watson Springs Road, O'Conie County. You're familiar with me. I'm familiar with you guys. And I want to talk about two things and I didn't realize I was going to talk about parks until I came here today, but I I understand that, you know, the county is growing tremendously and that we want to accommodate everybody as best we can. And the young lady that came up that has the business, the tennis business, who's that? What was your name? Heather? Taylor? Taylor. Taylor has got an interesting situation. Taylor, you're a private business, right? And we're using public facilities for private business. There's a big opportunity there. It's public-private partnership. And we should investigate that because there are grants available for public-private partnership if she is interested in taking on that role. And that's the opportunity to grow more than we had planned to in a way where there's somebody else that's kind of shouldering part of that financial burden. So just just letting you know, that's an option. That's a good option for for the communities. Secondly, you know, I usually come up here and talk about safety on Cullen Ferry Road where I live off of. And just want to reiterate the fact that I appreciate those of you that did reach out to me or reach out to the Sheriff's Department in regard to the situation of people totally disregarding speed limits and totally regarding disregarding traffic regulation on Cullen Ferry Road. Still going on, of course. I did notice that somebody has put in some your speed is signs that kind of do a radar and check you right before you get to the Aston Dale Cullen Ferry intersection. That's important as long as you're not one of the young kids that likes to see how high they can make those numbers go on that device, which is a thing, believe it or not. You stated earlier that you guys are putting in a roundabout there and the bidding should be in or should be out for bid by October first. So probably and from what I know, we'll probably award the bid and then probably start bidding, building sometime in December. Does that sound like the right timeline?
Could be.
Sixty, yeah, roughly. So my question is, is there a problem putting up two stop signs? To stop, to make it a four-way stop until that time? Like I said, you know, if we can make people aware, if we can make all four sides of that intersection stop and we cut down on the injury and the accident by just 50%, that's a tremendous amount. And that's what I'm asking is, is there a reason we can't just put two stop signs there?
There has to be an engineering warrant to to put up a stop sign. You can't just go out there and put stop signs. I got a document here I can give you that shows from the federal highway the the downfalls to doing that. You've got people that I mean, actually, Union Church at New High Shoals Road is a four-way stop. And it scored higher on the rating to be done prior to the intersection you're talking about. And it's already a four-way stop. There are actually more accidents there than exist.
I'm I'm sure there's probably a lot more traffic through there too than there is on Cullen Ferry at that point. And I'm not going to guess one way or the other. Okay? I understand there needs to be traffic engineering studies done. However, we're not, it's not a federal road. It's not a state road. It's county road. And the way ownership is, the way I understand it, county can make decisions on what to do there themselves.
I don't think anybody on this board is going to sit up here and say, go put a stop sign up without the correct.
Right. So if somebody dies between now and then because they, there was no stop sign there, what are we going to do? We're going to go back and say, gee, maybe we should have rethought that. Let's just, I'm just talking about it because I I drive it every day, twice a day. My wife drives it every day, twice a day. That particular spot is very bad. Like I said, my son died in the in on Cullen Ferry Road on March the fourth. But within nine days after that, there were two accidents, severe accidents at Aston Dell and Cullen Ferry. And one guy had a, one guy, I responded, one guy was just had a liver transplant. And his liver was hemorrhaging because of the accident. The other girl that was in the accident was laying on the ground with blood coming out of her ears and her nose. Right? That's pretty severe. I don't think either one of them died. Thank goodness, but that happens. So just asking, I appreciate the, your speed signs, whoever got those put up, that was great. Let's do more and let's work on enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't planning to get up either. My name is Melissa Harshman. I live at ten sixty-one Stratford Drive in Wat- in Watkinsville. And I just want to kind of add support to Terry and Taylor. I played tennis my whole life, but off and on, and I really got back into it about five years ago and started out here in OVP, taking lessons with prior to Taylor's Tall Socks clinics and really got into it. And I don't have numbers, but it seems like since I've been playing in like the last four to five years, there are more teams than ever. I'm on a lot of them. But one of the things that happens even now with our leagues is there's so many leagues that we can't all play at once. So as much as I love tennis, it kind of becomes an all-day affair because we have to split our times. We have to wait to then get on court. And so it becomes all day rather than just like my morning. But I think there's great enthusiasm I've seen in O'Conie as well as Clark for tennis. And I haven't seen the plan, but I was reading over that the original plan called for, if I'm not mistaken, 22 courts. And then I heard rumors, I mean, that the four courts that are at Herman C. Miller were going to be pickleball courts and then they were going to build four more courts, which would just not do tennis players any advantage because if those become just tall socks courts, which I know is a great program. So I'm hoping that in the budget, that original, if I'm not mistaken, 22 courts in total will be realized, if not at least the 16, because I feel like I know pickleball is growing, but tennis has been here forever. And it's and I see it growing exponentially. And so I'm just here to add another voice that I hope that sooner rather than later we'll be able to break ground. And also, if I have a choice, honestly, sometimes I go to ATC now because they have a nice facility and nice bathrooms. I just have to say the bathrooms over here need some attention, not just for tennis, but for all the folks who are using the fields and the other sports I've heard much support for. So I'm just throwing my name in the hat to hope that all of these courts are built sooner rather than later. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan McKinney, twelve hundred Mallard Circle, Bogart, Georgia. I'm also a tennis player, recreational. But I also have entrepreneurial spirit about me too. And years ago, we used to have tournaments here. And I feel like we're missing such a good opportunity to build out this area of the the county and have the people, the tennis communities from all over the state of Georgia come in and and fuddle their money here to us instead of Columbus and Macon and Savannah. Because we've got the best opportunity right here in our backyard to have a facility that would be phenomenal. That, to me, would be a feather in our hat, not only financially, but amongst tennis players all over the state of Georgia. The extra 24 courts would be fantastic. I know y'all are in the analytical stage right now, so it's it's hard to question you what you're going to do and when. So we'll be back. I know we'll, we'll probably come back in bigger numbers, I hope. But thank you again for considering all that you do and and making this possible. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Jason Bragg. I live at eleven forty-one Nona Drive, also in Athens, but in O'Conie County. Two kids in O'Conie County Schools. Both make good use of your Parks and Rec system. So thank you, our Parks and Rec system. Come to you today just on behalf of the Board of Directors of the O'Conie Parks Foundation. I joined that board a little over a year ago and have really enjoyed working at it, really enjoyed the group. We've got a number of our other board members in the audience that came today to listen to what you said. Very exciting to hear the changes that are coming at Dawson Park. And not coming here asking you for anything, just wanted you to know that our Parks Foundation Board is here to help you. We've got a group of volunteers that have been actively raising money for the playground in Bogart, trying to step our fundraising up to the next level and also our volunteers. And as decisions are made with the parks as they go forward, we would love to be a part of those conversations to act, ask how we can add value, whether it's through volunteer capacity, whether it's through private fundraising, through other things. I know there's a little unique space that we can occupy to hopefully add value to those parks in the future. I just wanted to tell you, we want to be a partner and are looking forward to working with you in the future. Hope to meet all you in in person soon. Moved to the county about three and a half years ago after wanting to move back here for a long time. But really love it here. I just wanted to thank you for your dedication. I know being a local elected official, it's one of the hardest jobs in in America. And just thank you for your dedication, your service to this county. Thank you.
Dan McGee, Unincorporated County, uh, Oconee County. I'm going to repeat things I've said before as I age. My wife says I repeat. But, uh, once again, thank you for having the town hall. Uh, a lot of cities and counties don't have quarterly town halls, so deserve a lot of credit for doing so. I've worked in government for decades. Um, you've gotten a lot of flack on the trails. Thank you for building them. I know a lot of people complain, they're going to use. Kids are going to walk to school. They're going to walk the Dunkin' Donuts on that sidewalk. I'm going to use it. Uh, people are going to bike, uh, jog, run. Um, thank you for doing so. I know you've gotten some criticism for it. It's going to be here for decades and people are going to use it. Um, Dawson Park, um, I was around five years ago when it first came up. Um, I know everyone's built tomorrow. I know the, uh, the, the issues being the former LAS site, it's going to take a while, but just thanks for having it. Um, this is a good, good problem to have. Other counties don't have, aren't as active as we are. Uh, the county directly west to you has one park for over 80,000 people, as I well know. So thank you for having some planning and foresight. Um, as soon as Dawson Park's built, yeah, you can plant another one. Once again, this is a great problem to have. Uh, neither county has it. Lisa and Pat doing a great job with they have. They really do a fine job. Maybe with a new superintendent, school system, maybe those tennis courts and other facilities can open up again. Uh, previous position, I hosted a ton of tennis tournaments, a lot of people from Oconee coming over. Hopefully with some change in administration, those, uh, 20 courts at the high schools, 20 courts, high schools, at least for tournaments for youth and adults. It can be here. It's hotels. It's other people. You don't have to travel. So maybe with the change in administration, we can at least have some tennis tournaments or, or other use in the summer. Um, I just hosted an event for 300 people, the Civic Center. Uh, Ms. Whitney's doing a good job, just in case you got any questions. She's doing a great job as a senior Civic Center. I got a question. Young man, how, how old is the county? Take a guess. How old's the county? 150, 150-year-old county. Uh, I think we needed a little bit more publicity. It's a big deal. Justin, a little more publicity, 150 years old. Uh, I spoke to you all this last week. I hope, uh, Mr. Underwood can save that 165, I mean, yeah, 165-year-old home. Uh, there can't be many houses in the county at 165 years old. I'm going to reach out to historical society. I should have done that before, but, um, if that's demolished, that's a piece of history you'll never get back. Uh, do you guys know, are there many houses that old? Lee, do you know? Can't be a lot. But that house is 15 years older than Oconee County. So if that can be saved, um, that would be fantastic. My, my, uh, I'm sorry for shotgun here. Um, my son was friends with Will. Um, it's been very, very tough on the junior class and the whole school. Um, they're telling the truth of Cullen Ferry. It's tough. Uh, I really think the sheriff at least once a year can come to town halls. Uh, I've been coming to like 40 of these. I don't remember ever seeing him. I think the sheriff can come at least once a year. And here instead of just coming to you guys because we know enforcement, other things are him. Sheriff Hale needs to be here once a year. He really does, but they're telling the truth. I've had cars pass me on Cullen Ferry. It's not, it's not one of the safest road in, in the, um, county. Last thing, I've said before, uh, I've had a lot of issues with the unprofessionalism, the ER snail. I'm, I'm sorry to hear they got another contract. But here's something minor for your public works director, for Justin, for everyone. Uh, as they finish sections on experimentation, you can do some upkeep. You can mow, you can edge. There's sod across the curb. There are weeds that waste high or whatever. Uh, they should have been spraying them as soon as they put down, as you know, for pre-emergent or whatever. It's going to be tough to get some of those weeds back, but they, they can sweep, they can move the sandbags. Your experimentation looks horrible. And I know how GDOT works and how ER snail works. In the end, punch lists, bam, bam, bam. But, uh, the average person, I know Lee knows it's ER snail and GDOT. The average person, my wife thinks it's you guys. It's not the county. They can do a better job. It looks like hell. They should not wait till the last, uh, two weeks on the punch list, whatever. Should have been doing pre-emergent. They can edge. They can, they can brush off the sidewalks. They can do other things like that. Uh, it's embarrassing. It's not you, but whoever you're liaising with them is, please reach out to them and say, listen, this is our county. Tens of thousands of people going on those roads every day. They're not doing a good job. It's just, it's slack, man. It's slack. ER snail, they got to do better. Thanks for having the town halls.
Uh, hi, my name's Morgan Anders. Um, just want to say thank you guys for taking the time to do this. I know it means a lot to everybody and a lot to my families, but I'm actually in, uh, Bethlehem right now. We're driving over here, but me and my wife grew up here, graduated from Oconee County and now have the pleasure of serving about 300 families, um, in our soccer club. Um, we are, heard some, uh, talk about our practice fields. We're proud of our sandlot. Um, but, uh, you know, we are definitely looking forward to what you guys have in store for the parks and, um, just the amount of traffic you deal with it. It's, uh, it's pretty impressive what you guys are able to do with keeping those fields in the shape that they are with the amount of people trying to use them. So, um, I will say, uh, with us and where we're at, um, we are happy to be patient. Um, but if there's ever a, a time that we can help you guys in any way with fields, um, we've got a lot of, uh, Oconee residents. I think we're 95% Oconee kids. We've got a couple of kids who come from Monroe, but, um, you know, it's, it's just funny seeing this county grow because I, I've been here since I was, I was six and I started my soccer career on the baseball field at Herman C. Michael before OVP was here and we were playing with, uh, corner flags as goals. So, uh, you've come a long way. Um, and we're happy to be a part of that in any way we can. Um, and, uh, one of the things that we're doing is we're going to these tournaments in Gwinnett and Atlanta. Uh, went to Gatlinburg, Pensacola, um, Greenville, um, and Charleston this year. Uh, teams are doing well. They're bringing home medals. Um, but we would love to kind of represent Oconee here. Um, I hope that you're open into the idea of, you know, hosting, you know, tournaments for the soccer world as well. Um, it's a big moneymaker. I believe it's, you know, 550 to almost $800 per team sometime. It's a, it's a great way to get people to come here rather than us going to Atlanta. Um, I'm looking forward to the day we can plant our backyard and kind of represent, uh, the Oconee area. So thank you again for your time. I'll make it short. I know, uh, you know, you have a lot of supporters here with our club, um, and what you guys are trying to do. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Crowe and I've lived at 143 New High Shoals Road in Watkinsville, just within the city limits for the last 20 years. And I'm going to just be another person to come out and support the tennis community in Oconee County and Taylor's program. She was kind enough to put her name in the hat and step up when Stacy's program, um, Stacy was nearing retirement and had done it for a long time. I first moved to Athens in the mid 90s and as a recreational tennis player since seventh, eighth grade, you know, joined the Tennis for Life League out of Bishop Park. And what I remember most about those couple of years that I played with that league was driving to other counties outside of Athens to random high schools or, you know, ball fields that had a couple of courts to play these matches. And even then I remember thinking like, God, Athens only has Bishop Park with these, you know, four, four courts or whatever they had then. OVP didn't exist then. I mean, I remember driving, you know, out to Herman C when, before Publix and all that. So like a lot of people, you know, life moves on. You start having kids. You don't pick up a racket for several years, but thankfully the Tennis for Life program still existed out here and they had drop-in clinics that I started taking part in. And one thing led to another and, you know, ended up finding out what a thriving tennis community is here. So I've been playing for these recreational leagues and teams and have co-captained and not actually captain, but have been responsible for trying to find courts for our teams to play on, whether it's at OVP or ATC for the last seven, eight years, I guess. And all I can say is that there is just, I've been amazed at the number of players from all walks of life, people, you know, men, women that I've met at church or, you know, the university, different aspects of my life that turned out to be tennis players. There are so many players here. And I didn't even think about the tournament aspect until Susan McKinney got up and talked about it. But growing up in my hometown, an hour north of Nashville, Tennessee and Kentucky, you know, we had various tournaments in South Central Kentucky and my hometown at Parks that did bring in a lot of revenue. And that's a great opportunity for this county to consider uh, with the number of players here. I've often thought since I've been playing, if every member of COTA who pays dues to USDA was able to contribute five extra dollars, could we have more courts in Oconee? Um, you know, that's something that I think there would be a lot of people that aren't here tonight step up and be willing to consider if there is a way that we could sort of help promote, you know, this community and help give us more courts, because there are a lot of times during the year when it is nearly impossible to get the number of players that want to be out there playing, playing. We do live in Georgia. Our weather is not always ideal. As we just saw, there were just, you know, three and a half days of full-on rain. The only indoor courts that I know of in Athens area are UGAs. 10 years ago or so, there was talk about moving the tennis facility at UGA out. College Station Road, kind of where the new vet school is. And then those courts right there on campus might've been more available to the community. Well, that's never happened. So, you know, we are limited. We are very limited. And I know pickleball is growing as well, but I do think that tennis is a sport that appeals to people of all ages more than pickleball and could potentially bring in a lot more revenue to this community. So that's just my input onto the tennis community and how grateful I am that it's here. And I'm grateful for all of you for having these town halls. I think I've emailed all of you in the last five years at least once or twice about tennis. Um, and thank you for your responses and for being here. So.
Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, Board of Commission, um, my name's Eric Gattiger. I'm at 1101 Golf Course Lane, Athens, Georgia. As my wife said, he's my better half. Uh, we do live in Oconee County and I'm, I'm listening to all the, the interests, uh, here with the park system. Uh, it's absolutely wonderful. Um, I've been here since 1995. I retired here within the community at the University of Georgia. Uh, currently serving on the Oconee Parks Foundation. And I, I didn't like, I'd listened to all the, the, uh, the interests. Um, and it's very exciting, uh, that we have Dawson Park that's, uh, in the works. Um, I'm listening to people talk. I listened to Philip, uh, how he's taking his kids bouncing around outside the county. And I, and I'm sitting there thinking about when 20 years ago, when my kids were in the rec program with basketball and we're having to bounce around the county. That's 20 years ago. I see the explosion that this county is experiencing. I see all development in, in Watkinsville and in, you know, the surrounding, the other areas nestled within Oconee County. And I can always see that the demand for the parks system is only going to grow. I've, I think if we do it right, uh, with Dawson Park, I think that's going to relieve a ton of pressure from OVP. So all I just want to bring to the table and ask is that when we're looking at design and we look at ways that we can not just plan for the now, but let's plan for the future because this county is only, it's a wonderful county. We're tops in so many different areas. Uh, let's plan for future growth. So we don't get back to the ground zero where we're saying, okay, where, where's our next park going to be? So let's look at what we can do to get the most out of that space. So we have opportunities for, just like my kids did within this county, even though we had to bounce around from school to school for basketball. But that the people that are coming into this county have a place for their children as well. Thank you.
Travis Stevens, I live at, uh, 1576 Horseshoe Ben Lane in Bogart. So I, my, I have five kids. I was up here, I think, last quarter. And, um, a lot of them came up through the rec system and, and listen, the rec, the rec system is awesome. But as these kids progress out of that and they get into some of these other ones that, that Philip was talking about, um, I have three that play in, the feeder league, feeder basketball league, three at OFC, and then I have one that plays in the Under Armour Rise Football, Flag Football League. And if you want to see chaos, go to Malcolm Bridge Middle on Friday nights because there are a lot of kids out there for that league playing flag football. And they're, they're playing on partially dirt fields out there. And, and so the, the space that is needed for the outdoor sports obviously is, is very evident by a lot of people that hear. But I think the indoor, when we were here last time, we talked about they're only going to really entertaining the idea of four courts. And I'm just trying to see if that's still what, what we're looking at going forward, or if it's, we've entertained more courts. I know that we talked about possibly doubling that, but what's the thought process? Now, where are we at now with it, I guess?
Uh, so we're, we're looking, we're trying to get to eight total so that the design consultant's been awarded that they're going to work on. How do we accomplish that? A lot of that's going to come down to cost and then what the appetite is, um, to, to come up with. We have money to, we have a certain amount of money. We're going to see how far that goes. And then we'll have conversations over the next several months, once we get those figures in about how to bridge the gap.
Okay. Are we still thinking doing, or, or I mean, I know it's money, but look, it sounded like we were leaning more towards doing the four courts and then coming back later and doing another four, another building.
That's a possibility. All, all this comes down to the expense and how much debt the county is willing to take on, right? So our initial concept is, is looking at two buildings with four courts each. That way it could be phased. Turns out it's cheaper to do one big building. That's, that's stuff the architect's going to be looking at.
Okay. All right. Thank you guys for your time.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Vandiver. I live at 1120 Founder's Boulevard, Athens, but it's Oconee County. I don't have prepared remarks, but I came to the meeting with my friends and we're just here to support the tennis community. I say ditto to all the remarks that have been said about tennis and I can attest to it's a lifetime hobby. Been playing for over 30 years. My girlfriends and my teammates back there, y'all way. We, we've been together 30 years and it's a big part of our, just our social life and our, just our community. We're just want to support the tennis community here and say ditto to everything that's been said. Thank you.
Is there anybody here representing a sport that hasn't been mentioned? Ross? That's a whole, that's another issue. I thought I saw the chairman of the school board here earlier. Yeah, Michael, if he was still, I would just point you to him. Cause that, you know, that opens up some other arenas, but uh, that one's a big hurdle. And when you start mentioning school teams, that they have to take the lead on that. Not saying that I wouldn't support something, but they've got to take the lead on something where you got varsity players or wherever they're going. Cause they're going to run into the same trouble that we ran into with the school system, with the university. The university wants some out of the Ramsey Center. Y'all disagree with that? You can tell us. I told Michael that. And, uh, so what they do that persuade, they're going to have to take the lead on that. There's other, I see other things, uh, because I, I have been so involved in this arcs issue. Anybody up here would tell you they tired of listening to me. I want to get this thing going. Uh, I want to get as much as possible and get it to where we're not, where we should have been 15 years ago. And that's not to cast any blame toward anybody. We didn't have the money. I got here in 1980 and I cut the grass out at Bogart with a bush mower so my kids wouldn't be in tall grass. Now I'm the only one up here that didn't grow up in Oconee County. And I have never regretted coming here. We, we had challenges. We had struggles. I can remember when I was on the school board about, you know, parks and rec needing to use, uh, what we had for tennis. I remember all those days. And, uh, and my, my granddaughter happens to be Phillip's daughter. So I, wherever she goes, Brenda and I try to go. That's how I saw how far behind we are. No, again, no stones at anybody, but when, when Brenda and I moved here in 1980, the county didn't have much money. Y'all, a lot of y'all came in after prices of land started going up and up. You came from some other place that had tennis courts in the subdivision. We didn't have that. But we're having to catch the rabbit. And again, I want to see as much as we possibly can. I will tell you, I firmly believe that the opportunity we have in front of us for tournament play in Oconee County is tremendous. We've got some hotels that are coming online, I think. So that brings in people like my son-in-law and my daughter. They go to Savannah, they take a thousand bucks with them. Well, can we not figure out a way to get some thousand bucks out of Chatham County folks and let them come up here and stay with us? As much as I like Savannah, I like Oconee County a lot. So I firmly believe that we can do something that really gives back to the citizens of this county. And we do pretty good with your tax dollars. I'm going to tell you, you all want to argue with me, fine, you come up here, but you're going to lose. You're going to lose. Our mileage rate is one of the lowest anywhere in the state. And so I think we do the best we can with that. But I think we've got some opportunities that we never had before. We never had three hotels that are already zoned. They can be a big player. The restaurants, the mom and pop restaurants and stuff that we have can benefit. So I'm one of those that, you know, if we can make you happy, we'll make you happy. I'm going to push it as hard as I can. And I will say this, having been on the school board, I also see an opportunity, and yes, there's a change in administration. I ain't say a word. But you know, what really showed me something that was really not Oconee County is when the school system started charging us to use their facilities. That was one of the worst things I have ever seen in this county. And I think had it been somebody that was from Oconee County, they would have never made that call. But what it did show me was that we are vulnerable. We don't have a backup. There is no backup if the school system says you can't use this elementary school anymore. Because we've got to have someplace to put the wrestling team. So what's Lisa going to do? Where are we going? That's the issue. That is the issue. Now, I don't know what's going to happen down the road about the financial part, where we go. But I will tell you this, if it goes to a ballot issue, you folks got to get out there and you got to get the votes. It's not waiting around saying, well, I can't go to vote today. I could have talked to Charlie, but I, no. You got to get out the vote. Because in my opinion, this could be, probably will be, the most expensive project this county has ever taken on. And for us, there's going to be a lot of angst and that sort of thing. But I don't see an option. What, and I'm saying this in public, because this is what I would say to them if we were somewhere drinking tea, coffee, whatever, is if we don't get it right the first time, somebody tell me when the second time to get it right is going to be. That's what I'm worried about. We're still messing with the tennis courts at OVP. We should have had them done a long time. Get it behind us, be quite honest with you. John and I worked hard with the pickleball people. That wasn't easy. That wasn't easy, was it? And I knew one of them, but you know, but I think this is, this is something that, it is Oconee County. It is not the county committee. It is for the people of the county. So I just think that if we don't get it right the first time, I can't tell you when the next time is going to be. And I don't like to be in that kind of position. So again, this whole thing, we have got to have citizens buy in. You got, if it goes, whatever's on the ballot, you got to, you got to work to get the voters. Now, if I've stepped over the line about the splosh and my position, you know, so be it. Throw a rock, I don't care. But I'm too old to worry about that kind of stuff. But this is critical to me. Because I'm going to leave you with it. When I would go around to watch my granddaughter play, I saw then how vulnerable we are. We do not have the space. We just don't have it. And like Phillip said, I got to go to Commerce to watch two Oconee County teams play? Can't we not figure out how to get them back over here? So that's my commitment. And I'll tell you, I don't, there isn't a day goes by that I'm not on the telephone with somebody about the park. We've just got a golden opportunity. And I'll say this, Wendell Dawson, when he was chairman and his commission, they bought that property out that will be Dawson Park. That's why it's named after him and his wife. He never saw what we're talking about. But I hope he is around to see what it turns into. Because it will be one of the greatest gifts back to the public that we will ever do as a group. So just keep that in mind and talk it up. I appreciate y'all coming, you know, you're on board. But we got to keep plugging. You can't, you can't just say we got it in the bay, that, uh-uh. We've got some more work to do. And I appreciate my colleagues listening to me. But there are a lot of kids out there that are in some travel sports program. You kind of forget about them because they don't sign up. And I just, I want to do everything we possibly can. So I've said enough. I appreciate y'all listening to me, but we got, we got more work to do.
Chuck, you asked what sports weren't mentioned. Girls volleyball's up right now. Flag football's hot, 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 really hot, boys and girls. And as you said, you know, five years now, rather have a tournament here, Savannah, Columbus, Gwinnett. Flag football's the next hot heat sport.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, I like hearing that we got kids getting involved in this, that, and the other. Because if they're doing that, there's a good chance they're not doing something else that we're going to have to deal with. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the parents that are involved in the coaching and trying to get these leagues up. But I do, I do believe that we have the ability coming up to really take advantage of the tournament play. And that goes all sports, all sports. And I'll say this, this is how I think. Imagine you've got eight basketball courts available on a weekend. How many basketball teams can you get from all around to come into Oconee County? They'll go to the varsity. They go to this, they go to that, they're spending money. We can have one heck of a tournament in our county. And there's nobody around here that can match it, not one. The only thing that would be better is to have multiple tournaments, multiple sports at the same time and be able to accommodate them. That's, I don't think it's real complicated about the concept. It's that getting over the finish line.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you Chairman Horton for bringing up elections.
He's the chairman.
No, I'm sorry, member, member Horton for bringing up elections. I just want to remind everybody to start practicing, to get out there and do your civic duty. We do have a Public Service Commission election coming up. It's a primary. The primary is, the primary election day is June 17th of this year. Early voting starts on Tuesday, May 27th, because the day before that, the Monday, is Memorial Day. And will extend up until the Friday before the election. You can also start requesting an absentee ballot if you're not going to be around. So Public Service Commission, what does it do? There are two districts, there are five districts in the whole state. Two of them are up for election this year. We get to vote statewide. Statewide gets to vote for both of them. So there will be Republican and Democrat primaries. You go and pick your Republican or Democrat primary ballot and you fill it out. Two posts, posts two and three, I guess, or two and five. I don't remember the exact numbers. But make your vote. And the Public Service Commission helps to regulate the rates of the power that you pay for power. It also regulates the power sources that are used. And right now, solar and nuclear are hot. One of the Public Services, Service Commissioners up for reelection has raised Georgia from seventh, I'm sorry, from 34th in the state in the number of green space dedicated to solar panels to number seven. We're now number seven in the country for, you know, green space dedicated to solar farms. So just think about that when you go and vote for your Public Service Commission. Just research it. You can find out if you're a fan of more solar farms, then that's what you're going to vote for. All right. Thank you.
Hey, just a comment on the Public Service Commission. Again, I'm Jeff Morgan, Watson Springs Road. That's very, very important and I'm in information technology. I have been in information technology my entire life. I want people to understand something that's very important because we have these large data centers moving into Georgia. We have large AI centers that are going to be moving into here, which consume a tremendous amount of power. A lot of these companies go to the Public Service Commission and say, we'll move there. And we're going to build this, we want a tax break and we want free power for 10 years. That's what happened with, I guess it was Amazon and Google, or no, it was Facebook. So they got free power. In other words, the taxpayer ended up paying for their power for 10 years. Now then, we're going to have AI coming in and it uses a tremendous amount of power. All these, all these GPUs instead of CPUs are tremendous power consumers. So it's going to put a tax on our already weak power infrastructure. Thank goodness the Savannah plant came online, the, I'm sorry, the Vogel, Plant Vogel. Good thing they came online, it's going to help. But we should not be giving, we should not be giving these giant companies free power and having the taxpayers pay for it. I just want everybody to understand that. So think about when you elect these Public Service Commission people, think about that and keep that in mind. Anyway, thank you.
Very much appreciate y'all coming out. Keep an eye out for our next town hall. I think it'll be October. Also, don't forget about our tax hearing on the 20th. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you for coming.